The Stillwater Planning Commission meeting of January 7th, 2025 will now come to order. It will be the process this evening to call for items on the agenda. The commission will hear briefly from staff first, then the applicant and/or their representative, and then open a public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or in opposition to the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. And then before closing the public hearing, both staff, the applicant and/or their representative will be provided an opportunity to respond and answer additional information, provide additional information and answer questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will be closed and we will hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. The first item this evening is under general orders, so there is a preliminary plat, S U B 21-13, and we shall hear from staff.
Good evening, Planning Commission. As stated, this is a request for an extension of a previously approved preliminary plat, which is for the subdivision of Parkview Estates, Section 10. Here's an area map of the subject property. It is in the vicinity of the Parkview Estates subdivision. Let's see. The preliminary plat was originally approved by Planning Commission on January 11th, 2022, and Section 23-63 F and Section 23-63 G state that if a final plat approval or any portion is not filed within two years of the date of the approval of the preliminary plat, it shall be considered disapproved unless the Planning Commission agrees to an extension of time prior to the expiration date. Oh, there it is. So, as stated, it was originally approved in 2021. This plat was granted an extension. No, that's wrong. It was 2022. My apologies. This plat was previously extended by, for 12 months by this Planning Commission in January of 2024. The applicant is asking for another 12-month extension due to just a few remaining issues holding up final acceptance of the improvements. And final plats cannot proceed and be accurately reviewed and presented for acceptance until those improvements are substantially complete. Here are these sections of code that I referenced earlier. Here's the previously approved preliminary plat. All right, that's... Are there any questions for staff?
There are no questions. Thank you. So as this is general orders, it's a little bit different than the process I iterated beforehand. We could have the applicant come up if we had questions? Okay.
Good evening, Commissioner. Steven Ghost with Ghost and Associates, 113 East Eighth Avenue. Haven't done this in a few weeks. Like Diana said, we're asking for another 12-month extension. The public improvements, the water sewer for the first phase of this preliminary plat are in, they're being reviewed by city staff. The final plat has actually been applied for, but it's in review pending some of the things with the improvement plan. So, it's just some minor cleanup, and because we're up against the date, we're here asking for another 12 months.
Any questions for the applicant?
So those water and sewer, I don't know, improvements, whatever you want to call it, that have yet to be approved by the city, does that involve any drainage or just the laying of the lines and where they're put? And...
Well, they're all installed and record drawings have been submitted. There's some minor things with stabilizing the earth around some of the valves on the water, the fire hydrants. There were some issues with a tracer wire in the sewer, but that's been resolved. And some minor erosion things around the edge of pavements. So, but the improvements are in, in the record drawings. That's what we're trying to finalize the approval of so that then the preliminary, or the final plat can come to you all.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
So as this is in general orders, there will be no public hearing as a part of this. So could staff come back and give us our findings and alternatives?
All right. As stated previously, it was, this plat was granted a 12-month extension on January 9th, 2024, which means that it is set to expire January 9th, 2025. So realistically, your alternatives for this item are to grant the extension of the preliminary plat for another 12 months, or to not grant it and let the plat expire.
Thank you, Diana. Anyone formulating a motion?
I move we approve the extension of the final plat.
Second.
Okay, yeah, I'll, just to clarify, this is a preliminary...
Preliminary plat, sorry.
Okay, so we have a correction and a...
Right.
Correction is also acknowledged by the second?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to grant a 12-month extension to the preliminary plat as presented. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. The next item on the agenda, we're moving into the public hearing section of the agenda, and the next item is a specific use permit, S U P 2404. I did see we had a memorandum in our packet.
Yes.
And that memorandum noted that while the S U P 2404, and this was for 1307 North Husband Street, it was tabled to the previous Planning Commission. Since that time, it has been noted that staff has requested no action be taken because there was a notice issue for that item, and the applicant has been informed in that we will set a new hearing date to schedule that. So, legal counsel shall, do we just need to table this?
And no tabling, it'll have to be renoticed and...
Just renoticed, okay.
Correct.
So we can just move forward?
No action requested.
Okay, no action on this item. All right, we'll move to the, to the second item on the public hearing agenda, and that is a map amendment, M A 24-15, and we shall hear from staff.
All right. As stated, this is a request for a map amendment for the property addressed as 5021 North Perkins Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone from agriculture, light industrial, small lot, single-family, office, two-family, multifamily, and commercial general, all to public. Here's an area map of the subject property. There are a few different parcels here, owned by one common owner. It's located near the intersection of Perkins, North Perkins Road and East Richmond Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. This is currently owned by the Independent School District number 16 and Bank SNB. It is currently the site of, oh, where'd it go? Currently the site of the school district for, oh, I apologize. It's miscellaneous offices for the school district as well as, I believe, oh no, where'd it go? I could've sworn I put it down. Yeah, I apologize. It's currently used as miscellaneous offices and other supplementary uses for the school district. Here's a street view of the subject property, looking northeast from Richmond. And here's a zoning map. As you can see, the leftmost part, closest to Perkins Road, is zoned for agriculture, with the majority of the secondary tract being zoned for light industrial, as well as some outer parts being zoned for small lot, single-family, office, two-family and multifamily and commercial general. The applicant is requesting to rezone all of the subject area to public for a future proposed use of the school support facility and transportation vehicle parking. Here's the future land use map. At the time of its adoption, with our current comprehensive plan, the future land use map was used to predict desired uses in the surrounding area, and according to that map, this area is desired to have commercial uses. Are there any questions for staff?
What's the rationale for the rezoning from C G to P? Is that because the offices are going to be used for the independent school district rather than a commercial use?
Yes, so that's, they're all part of, they're all owned by the school district, and I believe the school district is preparing to expand the current building to allow for better service to store their transportation vehicles and things like that. And so the parcel was split in between several different zonings, and to reestablish it as public, or just establish it as public, would allow for consistency across the whole lot.
Okay, thank you.
So I do have a question, and I apologize if it was in the packet and I overlooked it. What uses are allowed by right in the public zoning? And the reason I ask is because this abuts residential?
Generally speaking, public zoning is fundamentally a little different from the rest of the zoning districts. It is essentially whatever city council decides it can be used for, that's what it will be used for.
And then is it, is it required to be public if the, if the school district is going to use it for school district purposes?
I'm not sure about that.
Let me ask another question. So if it is public zoning, could something, could something go here that we wouldn't find in other zonings that abut the residential zoning that is to the north? Would we had something that would kind of be a one-off for the city of Stillwater for a subdivision right next to it?
Regardless of zoning districts, there are certain requirements, like screening and landscaping, when certain construct, like certain structures or certain uses happen close to a residential district. So I'm not 100% sure about, because it can depend, but...
I think the question is, what is, if this is rezoned to public, what uses are going to be allowed by right? I think that's the question.
That's the question. And I think, you know, that's, if this or me living right here, I'd want to know, okay, is it going to be a public park, which could be an asset? Is it going to be a warehouse for the city, which I may or may not be happy about, or be a warehouse for, you know, the school district? Is someone going to use it for a boneyard of sorts and have it start looking like something I wouldn't want? Could it be a public dump? Those are the things I'm trying to ascertain, if it could be allowed by the public zoning.
There, there is no set list of allowed uses by right in the public zoning district, but I do know that the property will still be owned by the Independent School District. I know they're planning to continue to use it as, you know, supplementary offices and as storage for their school buses and things like that. I don't know with 100% certainty about...
It sounds like if you want, we can, staff can research that and get back to you, maybe with a chart or some more explanation of what would be allowed there.
I would appreciate that. So if we could, I'd, chair would like to table this to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission. So, I would move to, to table this to the, and I'm looking for it. Thank you, the January 28th Planning Commission meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is another map amendment, and this is map amendment, M A 24-17.
All right. Thank you for that. As stated, this is a request for a map amendment. It is a request for a portion of the property at 2020 West Airport Road. More specifically, this section of land is addressed as 3111 North Harjes Road. Here's an area map of the subject property. As you can see, it is just south of the airport, along that Harjes Road, which becomes Airport Industrial Access Road. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. Directly to the south of the subject property is the current location of the city waste management facility. Here's a street view of the subject property. It is currently a vacant lot. And here's a zoning map. The request is to take the noted portion of land and rezone it from light industrial to public, with the goal of making this the new location of the proposed new facility for animal welfare. Here's the future land use map. As noted earlier, it was used to predict desired uses in the area at the time of the comprehensive plan, and at that time, this area was identified as, as, to be used for public, public uses. Are there any questions for staff?
So this is what was decided upon as a more viable location for the animal welfare facility, as opposed to the northwest part of Boomer Lake?
Yes.
Okay.
I have just a little clarification on the, thank you, thank you for providing the zoning map for us today. So the area that is shaded in blue, all of that is currently IL, so that would be light industrial. And then it looks like that there is a, there's a P noted, but it's kind of half on that blue shade. So I just, I would like to understand...
Yes.
Where we have light industrial?
So the entirety of the airport and all of the property to the east, west, and south, that is all zoned public. That darker blue, where the, where the marked box is and kind of extending along that corridor paralleling Airport Industrial Access Road, that's what's currently zoned light industrial. This request is specifically for that square portion of land, and, yeah.
So then, everything except what is shaded in the darker blue is public? And then, I guess, just what fronts on what I'm going to call the east side of Airport or Harjes is going to be light industrial?
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? So do we have a representative on this, or is... Hello?
Hi there, good evening. My name's Kelly Reed. I'm the Stillwater Regional Airport Director, and I can answer any questions you might have about airport property, which includes this parcel.
Any questions? So I think the only question I would have is, is the intent for the IL to remain as it is there along the, along the, along the east side of Airport and Harjes?
The shape of the parcel stays the same. The intent is to transition it to public property...
Okay.
For the city to be able to bring a vote to the people, to see if there's interest in bringing the Animal Welfare Center, developing a new Animal Welfare Center in this, in this location. We do have FAA approval of that proposed use, and the airport supports it as well.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any other questions? Thank you. So at this time, I would open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item, to please come forward? Or, would you like to speak in favor, sir? Okay, I'll, I'll give an opportunity for other views. Is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this item? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this item, or ask any questions? Yes, please, sir, come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Gary Cotton-Gimm, and I live at 1215 West Osage Drive. I think my house would probably be the closest one to the back of the property. My concern is, has the city done any studies about either noise from the facility, or, for lack of a better word, odor from the facility?
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak in opposition? Come forward, please.
Excuse me, yes, my name's Tom Houston, and I have a property at 35 Liberty Circle, and that's just to the south of the proposal. And there was a berm built around University Estates when they redid Airport Road. And that was in the early 90s, and shortly after, our property was flooded, because they had a rock berm that was, a rock drainage that was built, at this footage of the berm. And they replaced the rock. Actually, what had happened is that we had a heavy rain, and the berm broke, and our house was flooded from it. They replaced the six-inch rock with a larger rock, which is now eroding down to smaller rock. I'm not sure when it's going to break again. The city's done a poor job of maintaining that area, taking out tree growth that's coming in there, and so it's been some erosion around there. I guess I'm wondering what type of drainage is going to be affected from this into the University Estates area, and if there's any plans to take that into consideration.
All right. Thank you for your concerns. We'll see if we can get those answered in a bit. Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item? All right, seeing none, we would have the opportunity for either our planner to come and address those, or the representative from the airport, either of you.
Okay, so, as to the question about noise and nuisance, I, let me, sorry. So the, any concerns about nuisance and, like, noise and things, those... I'm sorry, I'm trying to collect my thoughts. Um, the...
Do you want to take the drainage question first?
Yes, the drainage question first. So as far as drainage and runoff and erosion and those sorts of things, those would be evaluated and reviewed by city staff with the building permit, not necessarily, because they haven't, we still require approval from city council to determine this spot as the new animal welfare location. So the rezoning does not necessarily have bearing on the runoff. That would be resolved at the time of issuing the building permit.
Which would that also come in front of us with the preliminary plat?
No. The building permit is subject to all of the city's requirements, as well as, I believe, O D E Q requirements, but the, any building permits are required to be held to the, the current building standards and the current engineering standards.
Mr. Barth, would you like to address some questions?
Well, I just would, I was kind of back here texting, sorry, some people who are more involved with the animal shelter. So David Barth, Development Services, just, there have not been any formal studies on odor or noise done formally for the animal welfare project right now. This is just a map amendment to rezone the property to public. As far as the, again, on drainage, you know, a city project is, still has to follow the same regulations. So a drainage study would be done, and drainage plan, and those are reviewed by engineers. Those things typically don't come before the Planning Commission. And, yeah, she, she's correct, it's not going to be platted, so, you know, that's, all of those reviews will be internal, but, you know, we do our due diligence, and we're definitely going to make sure that we're not creating any drainage issues for the neighborhood to the east or south. And we'll definitely be good neighbors. But, yeah, this is just a map amendment, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing. And Diana, did you have alternatives for us?
Our findings for this item are that the Land Development Code allows for the rezoning of land via the map amendment process. Public zoning is surrounding the subject area, and the comprehensive plan does call for public uses in the area. Your alternatives for this item are to accept the findings and recommend that city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented, find that the map amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity, and do not recommend that city council approve it, or find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation, and table the request to a certain date.
Thank you. Any thoughts or perhaps a motion?
This is to move the shelter that's on South Perkins Road, South Main?
Yes.
Replacement, mhm. So the lot size that we're talking about here is 6.8 acres, so it's, it's fairly substantial. I think it's probably similar to what is currently used at the animal shelter. It might be... It might be just slightly larger. I mean, looking at this, and I appreciate the comments and the questions and the concerns from the nearby residents over here. This is a public zoning. It is, it doesn't abut any, the property that we're talking about. And I don't know if you all had seen that, to see the actual location, there you go. So that the portion that we're discussing, the almost seven acres that we're discussing, doesn't directly abut a property, residentially owned property. It's surrounded by other public property. So it seems like this would have some buffer distance from the homes in the area. I think staff did a great job of addressing some of the questions and concerns as to how the development process would work moving forward. And I believe it was mentioned that there's a vote yet pending on this item. I think, yes, there's a public vote pending on this item.
With all that being said, I think that I personally find this to be an appropriate use for that property, and would motion to accept the findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is a preliminary plat. This is preliminary plat S U B 22-08. We shall hear from staff first.
All right, our last item for public hearing this evening is, as stated, a preliminary plat for the subdivision titled Greenheart Place. It has previously come before this planning commission as Quail Meadows, located at 1413 and 1599 East Lakeview Road. Here's an area map of the subject property. To the southeast is located Skyline East Residential Subdivision. To the south, directly to the south, is Skyline Elementary, as well as Stillwater Junior High and Skyline Park. And to the east is located oh, what's the name? East Ridge Edition, I believe. Let's see, here's an aerial view of the subject property. As you can see, the current property is, the property is currently vacant land. Here's a street view looking south off of East Lakeview Road. As stated, this preliminary plat has previously come before this planning commission in 2022. Back then, it was known as Quail Meadows. It was extended, the preliminary plat was up for expiration, and was extended by the planning commission in June of 2024. A few, well, some changes were made to the preliminary plat, so it has come back for renewal to the planning commission. The most substantial changes are that three residential lots were added. The outlot, which was originally for drainage, that has changed a bit in its shape and design. And of course, the title of the subdivision has been changed to Greenheart Place. Here's the previously approved preliminary plat from 2022. If you can see in that box outlined in red, there was an Outlot B and an Outlot A. And here is the current proposal. It has been changed to only an Outlot A, and has added three residential lots in that corner. Are there any questions for staff?
So mainly, it looks like they just determined they could add three extra lots into where that B drainage was, and still have enough drainage capacity just in the Outlot A.
And I believe Aaron Ferguson, who is the engineer on the project, he is also present to answer questions.
Any questions, any more questions for staff?
Well, I would like to understand what led them to the conclusion that they could add three lots to that previously proposed drainage area.
It's probably best answered by the engineer. Yeah, okay, thank you, Diane. At this time, would you give the applicants representative an opportunity to come forward and answer questions? Give us a little more background information?
Good evening, I'm Aaron Ferguson from Bancroft Design, located at 923 South Lowry. I'll just mention, this was a previously accepted plat, and then it was extended. And the reason why it was extended was just due to difficulties on getting sewer to the property, so that those issues have been resolved, and improvement plans have been submitted to the city on the site, but they're, they've been kind of put on hold once it was determined that the owner wanted to add those three additional lots in the southeast corner. So that's really the only difference from the original plat. And the reason why it was changed is Outlot A was always used for drainage and utilities, and that's still the case. Outlot B, there was a previously existing oil well at that location. It has since been plugged, and we have submitted documentation to the city showing that it's been plugged. And we're working with the city on coordinating what documents they further need to show that the easements for that oil well have been vacated. Now, so
I have a question real quick.
Sure.
Are there monitoring wells in place for that plugged well?
I don't know the answer to that. I know that it was plugged deep enough so that we can, we can build things on top of it, and it's not an issue. But I don't know of any monitoring wells installed.
So there's documentation from ODEQ stating?
From, I believe, the Oklahoma Corporation Commission.
Corporation Commission?
Yes.
Okay.
A revised detention analysis has been submitted, and is under review at the city. Outlot A expanded with it to provide more area for detention, so the city has that, and it's under review. The traffic impact analysis was submitted in 2022, and has been accepted by city staff, and it does not require any updates to the existing infrastructure. And we are still in compliance with the parameters of this analysis, so an update is not required. The analysis accounted for 16 duplex units, which are still a part of the proposal, and it assumed a total of 40 detached single-family homes. The initial plat called for 35 single-family homes, and with the additional three, we're at 38. So we are still under the 40 units that the TIA called for. It also assumed 192 apartment units, but that is left for future development, and has not been proposed or submitted yet. With that, if there are any other questions?
Could you, could you repeat that? I didn't write it down quick enough. You said 16 duplex units, and then?
Yes, so on the northwest corner of the site, there are eight lots, so those will all be duplex. So a total of 16 duplexes. And the TIA called for 40 residential, single-family homes. And the initial plat proposed 35. We're now proposing 38. So we're still under the threshold that the TIA planned for.
Thank you.
I didn't memorize the prior plat that was approved. I'm just curious. Lots five through nine are shorter than one through four. Was that a change, or were they always, was that?
Which block?
Sorry.
Oh, yes, on Combe Street, yes, that has always been the case.
It has, okay.
Yeah, but they still comply with the city requirements for lot size. The only other change on the plat was additional drainage easement along between lots eight and seven on the east side of Combe Street. And that's for a flume to carry water to the detention pond. And we had to increase the size of a few of the utility easements for the sewer going to the north.
Is the intention that Pacific Avenue would continue to the south and connect into existing?
It's left available if someone wanted to do that in the future.
I don't think on the aerial that there's another north-south road there. I think there would need to be one. Just trying to find the aerial on this. There we go. Yeah, so there's not another north-south paved road existing immediately east of this plat. Aaron, I'm just curious, could you, could you tell us again where that easement is to the well that's supposed to be abandoned?
It's shown on the plat. So the well is in the middle of lots, lots one and two, of the new
The new lots, one and two?
Of the new lots, and so you see the rectangle there on the north side. That's where the oil well is currently located. And there's an easement accessing it, and then there's an easement across the large lot where the apartment complex that'll be vacated.
It's that rectangle right there.
There's an easement.
If you can, it's a PowerPoint.
It's actually, it's on lot two. It's right there, yeah. Right-of-way and easement.
This one? Okay.
And then I guess when we looked at the aerial, it looked like there was another kind of, I'm going to call it a cattle trail, if you will, like a well-worn path kind of across the northeast. Is that any type of easement, or that's just been a convenience? Footpath of some sort?
So on lot six, you can see an easement that somewhat follows it. This easement right here somewhat follows it. It goes off to the north. And that is also part of that same easement document that we're
That's to be abandoned?
Yes.
Okay, and that seems to have access then directly off of Lakeview? Was that to a well site, or was it just an access easement to a?
I believe it's just an access easement for that oil side.
All right. Sorry, I didn't pick up on that one. Are there any other questions for the applicant? I don't see anything here.
Thank you.
At this time, I would open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this item. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to return to present findings and alternatives.
All right, the findings for this item are that the proposed preliminary plat meets the subdivision and zoning requirements. The comprehensive plan recommends high-density residential uses at this location. Outlot A is labeled as a drainage and utility easement. Drainage easement areas typically include drainage structures, and the city code does not allow permanent structures within utility easements. Staff is recommending that utility easements are separate from drainage easements when possible. As pointed out earlier, there is a right-of right-of-way and road access easement that exists in that block six area of lot two. And there's also that 30-foot pipeline easement, wrong direction, that was pointed out earlier. That was the access easement. So I believe the documentation for those easements proving that they are being closed and abandoned is still under review. And as the last finding states, a plugged oil well is shown along the north boundary of lots two and three in block six, and there are no proposed easements along this north boundary. Your alternatives for this item tonight are to accept the findings and approve the proposed preliminary plat as presented. Approve with the, approve the proposed preliminary plat with the conditions, noting what conditions should be met for the approval of the final plat. Reject the findings and deny the proposed preliminary plat, or find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a decision, and table the request to a certain date, noting that action must be taken within 60 days of the public hearing.
So, these findings are a little bit detailed this evening, so I just maybe wanted to discuss that for just a second, and I've discussed this with Aaron. Just want to go back and look at this, if we could get that up on the screen again. So this area that's Outlot A is currently labeled as a drainage and utility easement. And you can see that there's a sewer line here along the rear of these lots, but it's within that Outlot A. And so because that's all one gigantic, you know, area that's marked as a utility easement, and if they build a drainage or detention facility, there's nothing really to stop a utility, ONG, somebody, I'm not blaming ONG for anything, but another utility from putting something through the detention facility or impacting that in some way. And so we can't, our code does not say that you have to, but we are recommending, and I've discussed this with Aaron, to put this sewer line that's right here along the east side of those lots, and then the water line that is at the back of this cul-de-sac here. You can't really see it because it's underneath the property line, but there's a water line there in a dedicated utility easement. And then, and then the rest of this would be, could be a drainage easement if they need it to be. And so it's not shown on here today, but we would, the staff would recommend that that would be a condition on your approval of this preliminary plat. The other thing that we discussed is, or that was discussed that we had in our findings is, and you asked questions about this well. We don't know about any monitoring wells for that plugged well. We did call the person with the Corporation Commission that was on that, and he said that it was plugged four foot below the surface. So we've discussed that with the property owner. You know, because my concern, obviously, is if I were to buy that lot, and I wanted to build a house, and then go back there and start digging and put it in a pool, and I run into it, that would be a problem for me. So there's no, we listed in the findings, there's no proposed easements over that. I don't know that there is a requirement for easements to be on closed wells, but just thinking about, you know, how do you protect, you know, a future homeowner from having something in their backyard that they didn't know was there? And so I don't know if those, if those oil well closures are documented in a title for a property. a property. I'm not aware of that. So just, there's something to consider there. And then, yeah, those easements that are there, we're working with the landowner. You know, obviously, this will all be hopefully cleaned up with the final plat. But those easements are shown on there now because they exist today. Even though the well has been plugged, those easements are still there and haven't been closed or vacated.
Appreciate the clarification. Thank you. Any thoughts or perhaps some motion on this item?
So am I understanding this correct, that there will be a plugged well in a lot that'll be sold for building a house?
That's correct.
That is correct, and it has happened before, and it is permitted.
Okay.
Not saying you have to prove it, I'm just letting you know.
No, I understand. I'm just concerned, it's one of these, please read the fine print by the buyer, or buyer beware. And I just have concerns with that, as I've run into similar, not the same, but similar situations. And the planning commission had reservations about that.
I would share your reservations about that.
So can we leave, not necessarily an access easement, but an easement that is stating where that well is?
So, I mean, an easement would be if someone wanted to have access to that.
They would have to have.
And then I guess it would restrict building in that area.
And how did you make it zoom in? Oh.
I would have concerns if Corporation Commission would want to put monitoring wells in, and it's been a while since I've dealt with this, but what I'm, kind of the process I'm familiar with is that monitoring wells would be similar, you know, close to something that's been plugged, just to make sure after a number of years that there's no leakage coming out that could cause a health concern. And I believe that if you've got monitoring wells somewhere, they need to be accessed by whomever the party is that's monitoring them. I don't know if they've come up with telemetry these days, and that's all done wirelessly, perhaps that's the way it is, I don't know. But I would have a concern, you know, one, if someone were to try to build over that, it would be kind of an unknown situation, as well as if there were any kind of health concerns to have the well there. This is within walking distance of an elementary school and the junior high, which also would kind of lend me to believe in the neighborhoods around there, there are a lot of children in these areas. So would, you know, you could have someone young living in this location and have a health hazard. So I just, I have concerns with having a buildable lot with a plugged well under it.
I just wanted to zoom in and show you that it is shown on there. It's kind of small, I realized, to look in your packet. And I, I mean, this to me, Erin could clarify if you, that looks to me like that was the fence around the pump. And so, but I'm not a well expert. I wouldn't tell you, couldn't tell you like what area around that is impacted by a well and how long it was there and all of that. So, I mean, I, yeah, I think you could put an easement back there, because there's not, you know, typically, we have easements along rear lot lines, and for some reason, they don't have them here. You could put an easement over that area to where they wouldn't be allowed to build in it, on it. But yeah, that doesn't maybe address any of your concerns. It just, I think, you know, having some, having something there that protects somebody from thinking that they can build something there, and goes out there and starts digging, you know. And I don't know if that four foot's the standard depth, that's what we were told on the phone yesterday, so.
If that property line is moved to the south, to the other side of that well, does that make the lot size too small?
Yes, it does.
You see the cursor? Yeah, yeah, it would, because as you can see, the width of the lot is 60 feet here, and the length is 100 feet. The required minimum for the zoning district is 50 by 100. So to move it that far down, it would make it smaller than the minimum.
Well, and I suppose, just as I'm thinking through this, then they, that 35-foot right-of-way and easement that goes from the well, the plugged well location to the south, was there a supply pipe or a, what do I want to say, like a delivery line that was abandoned in place or removed, or do we know? Yes, please.
So I don't know of any additional pipes in that area. I believe that was for them to access the...
Just to access the well.
The well. And the easement on the larger lot is where the pipe exists and is being planned to be removed.
And there's no adjacent tank battery or...
I'm not aware of any.
Okay, all right, thank you.
If the utility easement, the other problem with the sewer line is created that sort of pulls some of the easement or the size off of the drainage, does that challenge the math of the drainage area?
It does not. There's still room discounting any easement, or the appropriate easement size, that the drainage would not be affected. And if we had to, we could also move that sewer line further to the west, farther away from the drainage.
Thank you.
Yeah, for me, it's, I think, less about building on top of it, as it is, the owner needs to know that it was there. If the owner knows that it's there and they want to buy the lot still, then that's on them. So how, the best way for us to make sure that they're going to be aware of that and that it's not going to just disappear until somebody hits it with a shovel? I don't know the answer to that, I guess.
Yes.
We could, I've not done this before, I've never done or messed with a project with an oil well, but I suspect that we could add a note on the final plat indicating that there is an oil well and the location of it for any future buyers.
So would that go on like the title of their lot?
I, that would, I don't know the answer to that directly, if it'd go on the title, but it would be on the final plat indicating that there's an oil well on lots one and two of block six.
I'm not an expert in title work, but I don't believe a title attorney would know or have any record to look at the land records to make that notation on the title opinion. It would just be on the plat.
Only be on the plat.
As it is now. I think they're saying they would just leave it on the final.
Are the minimum lot size requirements, is it 100 feet on depth from the road?
Yes, 100 feet in depth and 50 feet wide.
Okay. So you couldn't turn it.
Now I'm just trying to think outside of the box, is there any reason you couldn't move the three lots to the west and use that part as the outlot drainage?
So that's kind of a low point.
I assume.
If you look at the contours, everything's draining right there.
Yeah, there's a culvert right here.
Yep.
That drains onto it, and so the pond is located there to catch the flow from that culvert.
I mean, likewise, you could look at doing three lots that would come off the back of that cul-de-sac, or you might only be able to get two. Depends on how you would kind of work that to get a drive access off of that. There's still a lot of earthwork that would need to happen to, I think, probably get the minimum lot size, because it falls real quickly looking at the contours.
Yes. Yeah, where they're located now is the highest point in that area.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think if there could be additional information on what resources are available or what common practices are available to advise a homeowner that this well is there, I would be willing to table this and get that additional information to see if there's something that is a common practice. I wouldn't want to try to rely on something that hasn't been done before.
When this was presented before, and not maybe necessarily this project or another project the same, we kind of hit a dead-end road on anybody else that could give us advice.
Okay.
But I'm not saying we can't not do that again, but I did hit a dead-end road inside of Jackie with planning.
Well, I would be concerned not only the original owner, but any subsequent owner.
Exactly.
How would they be informed, knowing how real estate sales go?
Right.
Well, from personal experience, I can tell you that I trenched across my backyard and ran into about a four-foot by four-foot block of concrete. It was about a foot deep. Had no idea why it was there or what it's for. I still don't know. I just had to go around it.
And that's why I suggested, as an idea, it could be put on the final plat, which is always public record.
Well, is it even a necessity for financial viability to even have this lot in the plat?
It's two lots, really.
Two lots.
Because the way the well, the way that well straddles lots one and two, I have questions about both.
Okay, the question would be two lots then?
Yeah, so we're having to extend the sewer line down there, which is additional cost. And so I think if we did just a single lot, I don't know that it would be worth it economically because of the sewer line extension.
Could you give up lot two and just move lot one to the west?
I think we're running into space issues for the drainage pond, because it's very large.
Well, I would hate to disapprove the plat based on the necessity for additional housing in the area due to an issue on just one lot or two lots. But I just think there's a degree of risk here that I wouldn't want to take.
Sure.
Would there be a possibility to do something off of the cul-de-sac to increase?
We could, I can look at it. I don't, I'm not, so you're saying move those three lots over by the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, so, I mean, I would be, I would be agreeable to approve this preliminary plat with consideration of items noted in the findings in the report, item three and item four, addressing the drainage and utility easement separation, and addressing the right-of-way and easement being closed, as noted, as we've discussed previously. But I would not be in favor of those three lots. And so those would be the conditions that I would be able to approve this. And I will go out on a limb and make that a motion, if that's...
Can I clarify?
Yes, you may.
On the third requirement, it's approved with the condition that lots one, two, and three in the...
Be removed.
Be removed.
Yes. So I make a motion and would ask if there is a second.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes, I guess, three to two? Were there two no votes? It went too quick. Oh, there we go.
Two no choice.
Two no choice? Do we have, that's not an abstain, so...
Can we do a verbal vote, please?
Can we re-vote?
Yes. Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Proctor?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
The vote to approve with conditions passes five zero.
And that concludes the items that we have on the agenda in the public hearing section. The next item on the agenda is meeting summaries for review and possible action. We have the regular meeting minutes for, regular meeting of November the 5th. Do I hear a motion to approve as submitted, or any corrections or additions?
With no corrections, I approve to, I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as submitted on November 5th minutes. We shall now vote. Motion passes five zero. The next item is regular meeting summary for the meeting on December 3rd. Do I hear a motion to approve as submitted, or any additions or corrections?
I make a motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes four yes, one abstain. The next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, or the city attorney for discussion and possible action. The item that we do have listed is that our next regular meeting is January 28th. And I see no other last-minute miscellaneous items. So the last item is to adjourn. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes five zero. We're now adjourned.